Remind everybody why it's different or just pick who you want to.
Absolutely.
So we will reconvene our regular like kind of school board meeting, Mr. Stubb. Oh, so. Approval or amendment of the board meeting agenda items. So we have an addition, we have a late item, fourteen point one. Anything else to add?
I guess it'll arrive.
We're supposed to do the motion first. Does that apply to this one since? Okay.
Well, you don't know what the motions come with.
This is going up and we want to make sure that.
You're doing the bottom.
You're doing great.
Agenda?
Okay, well, you have a very discussed, so yes.
Moved to second edition question. I moved to accept the agenda in the reasonable out of item fourteen point one. I'll say.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the addition of fourteen point one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. We don't have to have a motion to. Okay. Approval of minutes. There was one change, we have Susan Warner wasn't here, so she wasn't the presenter on those two.
Won't we move her as the presenter because that's the original agenda as it was? So she just didn't make the presentation. But on the original agenda, she was put as the presenter, is that what you're saying? Okay, so then we won't change that because she was scheduled to be the presenter on the agenda. So just be whoever presented in the actual document. Because we don't want to amend the agenda.
Will, what's the new rules and why would OSBA want to amend that?
That's like changing something that didn't happen. So the agenda was put forward and that she was supposed to be the presenter, didn't have, we still want to leave her as was supposed to be the presenter. But in the thing it was, you know, we can put it someone else.
It would be way easier if we could.
Next time, be yours.
We're going to register Nick online.
So, okay, where is it in the minutes? There it is. So how many you account in the record then that?
That she didn't.
So it doesn't matter for the record because it rolled the recording what happened and the motion is what happened and it doesn't matter. Who presented it? We don't have to document who presented it?
We don't have to?
And they're on the agenda right now, not the minutes themselves.
The minutes themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, so you're only taking actions that you actually did, not who presented, not discretion, only things that the board actually does.
I guess some of our time says, because that is what happened, she didn't.
And she's not listed as being present there. But if we change that, we're changing the original agenda as it was put forward and we don't want to change the original agenda.
Because the agenda was what was supposed to happen and the minutes are what actually happened. And what was supposed to happen was she was supposed to be, that was what was on the agenda. So even though it didn't happen, that was what was planned on, so. So remember, again, it's what actually happened, not the one is what was going down.
What actually happened is she did not present it.
Correct.
So she shouldn't be in the minutes, she's fine on the agenda, but she shouldn't be in the minutes if that was.
She, no, it doesn't matter who's in the minutes, you don't need to list it at all. It just, there was a presentation on X. If that makes sense.
So that, her motion was made.
Right.
The motion was what was to be there.
Right.
And the walls were setting in the gym. That was originally closed. Right.
Was there any other changes before you?
Yeah.
I think we approved the amendment on this last assessment. July thirteenth meeting. I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes on the July thirteenth. Board meeting minutes, do we have any in the discussion? I'll reserve my discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. With the directing to Mrs. Warner.
Wait a minute, I took the American registry order to say, I wasn't at home, he can ask me from.
Well, we can look at some of your.
That's right. My gene, we put a different.
Hey, Will, do we have any early items?
I have none.
Okay. Correspondence?
I have none. No, actually, excuse me, I refer to this milk was on that one, so there you go.
Okay.
Hundred dollars.
And marijuana. I'm not sure what's going on.
I don't know, it's milk, it's just like milk and marijuana.
Okay, that's better now. So every year, generally, Collins and Donald, um, don't need essentially to our community or not for them. They ask for how many milks were served in the little grade levels and this is generally put that together for us and we send that over to them. So this year was a total of one thousand four hundred fifty dollars, which we received that check in, so this is basically just an acknowledgement.
It's done this for like.
Forever.
Decade.
Yeah.
I would say this, I mean, it's twenty-two years, I haven't called him dollars, but I've turned around and milk every year, but I think you're, and probably be on that, so.
Something nice.
Firm appreciation, same thing to Collins and Donald, for getting that year after year. It's a wonderful gesture, most appreciative.
Do you have a thanks to them?
You bet.
All right. Have a comment? Reports. Nine point one, will this be a summer word conference?
I can kick it off. Some of what we discussed in the work session, but it was a new superintendent during the committee, especially the aspects of superintendent evaluation, board self-evaluation. Though we may talk about, and this could be really of interest to you, Dustin, talking about our state lands and, you know, that they're originally, back in eighteen fifty-nine, when the state of the desert made it to the original school lands that, you know, the income from the state lands contributed to the common school fund. And over the years, I think Oregon has millions of acres, you know, something like to make seven hundred and one thousand acre state land in the state of Oregon now. Annual income is usually based off timber receipts, Elliott National Forest over in Douglas County and that part of the country. It's shut, you know, between forty and fifty years, the common school fund. And it's a huge chunk of change. And one thing, and I said Dustin, probably help me out, was the one thing to shut the Elliott National Forest down was Marvin Marlette Bird. And so basically, right now, it's quite a bait between environmental groups and religious state lands as far as what's happened to shut down those timber sales. Basically, they said at one time, you know, the timber sales and the resources to from the state lands, like, you know, I disappointed my family, how long state lands, that revenue, a lot of it, you know, tied in the environmental movement, it's shut down a lot of that revenue. Specifically in this Elliott National Forest over, you know, in that neck of the woods. The one thing that the ladyship from Utah brought up, and it's a scary prospect for us too, is listing of the sage grouse and the neighbor species. We had the discussion about that last year, it's not over yet. If that comes to fruition as far as Oregon state lands and the fableyn tree, that's going to have another financial effect on the revenue that goes into that common school fund. So it's still worth watching, this individual, that's what she does, she goes across the rest of the United States and talks to states about, you know, maximizing the potential to receive income from these state lands. And she said, you know, out of my eyes, I, the way it was set up, you know, they weren't called state lands, they originally, all these lands across the United States were called school lands. And the income is supposed to go directly to students and schools. That, you know, adds up as a rancher and as a superintendent, both aspects, the whole conversation, we're very interested in, and it was a very good session, you know, very highly. Evaluation pieces were fascinating and I think, really, that's my, that's what I brought back, so Rebecca, do you want to?
The conference is really good, I just went on Friday for that training for the executive secretary part. I learned a lot about parliamentary procedure and so we will all see some changes in our meetings, for you guys that weren't part of that discussion. So we can change things up a little bit, so the meeting will look a little different. The agendas will look different, the reason for that is we're going to be opening a regular session, so you notice we didn't open with the flag salute, and we did that already before we started the meeting, so that's already happening. Then we're going to the executive session and the work session, so that's the process of how this will work from now on in line with Florida's rules of order. And learned a lot about minutes and some changes to how those will be presented in the future and it was a really good session, I got to network with a lot of people around the state and get some good connections, people I can work with in the future and we will move forward from there.
Stephanie?
That meant a lot of meetings too, and I've forgotten everything because I've been told I have to do everything differently. But there was one, one really interesting case is our insurer, property casualty coverage for education, so we, along with other districts, pay into this and then they cover this for various, but they changed their first dollar amount up to five million, they're kind of self-insuring their, their deductible basically. So it went from two hundred and fifty thousand to five million. So their, their assets, their ending net assets in two thousand eleven, twelve were ten million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, it went up to twenty-four million, five hundred and fifteen thousand. So they've taken that four hundred, four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand and invested and done quite well. There was only one other person in the, in the discussion and so it kind of hopped around a little bit, but I, that was, on one hand, very reassuring that they're doing something right, that their bottom line is growing.
I would like to go to the session and find out what they invested in.
Yeah. Well, I think, I'm sure that combined with maybe less losses, so less payouts, because yeah, that's, that's quite a turnaround. Their, and the other thing I was gonna, their largest liability claims, age discrimination, wrongful termination, the next one was, well, actually, we didn't really talk about that, so maybe I should have talked about it, because I'm not certain what exactly that was talking about. So that, I went to that one and then the rest had to do a lot with board function, superintendent evaluation, how to handle unrelieved board members. Which we didn't like, people say a lot of stuff. I, I enjoyed it pretty much, but thank you. So that's, I didn't kind of look at.
Well, I'm saving best for last, one thing that's in the pack that I gave out to you is the general obligation law on sent bill four forty-seven, take a look at that, sure why you don't bring it up in the work session, but don't let me ask, we may be as far as capital improvements. Something we want to chat about later on, but here's the handout, and I said, please take a look at it and ask me any questions, you know, before that's for being, uh, next quarter. There are some schools across the state that are going to kick staff out, see if they can get a general law direction out and get some facilities improvements done, so. OSBA is very proud of this one, this is one that's really the issue that they talk really good about. Right now, the funds are somewhat limited, but they are really going to strive in the actual legislative session, and really give this and really helping with facilities, the facility across the state of Oregon. Then the last parts, want to stay, you know, to the meeting in regard to measure ninety-one, marijuana. So I talked to Jeff about it, so I gave Jeff the talking point sheet, and I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and let him chat about it, so.
As most of you are probably aware, as of July one, marijuana, at least on a state level, has been decriminalized, it's illegal to possess up to a certain amount, I think eight ounces, a certain number of plants, I don't remember it all off the top of my head, I keep a cheat sheet on this, I haven't been living in my criminal life, but it really doesn't change much for the school district. It's still legal under federal law and because we all get federal funding, and it's also illegal for anybody under twenty-one, it's illegal for anybody over twenty-one to use on school property. The Drug Free Schools Act, because it's still classified as a, what's called a Schedule One substance, which means that they don't recognize any medical value, if we suspect a student, we suspect a teacher, and then you have a reasonable suspicion, which is that you actually have specific facts to that person, if they're high or on influence, they're not allowed to have it on campus, they're not allowed to use it during school functions, and that's going to be a basis for termination or student discipline. So it really hasn't changed much for us, just with the fact that it's going to be a lot more available and it's going to be a bigger headache for the school. OSBA has got a whole set of policy updates that'll be first reading tonight, dealing with tobacco and inhalant systems. It also is going to shift a lot more into driving out of influence of intoxicants because kids have access to that and they are impaired to noticeable degree because there is no blood test or breath test that, where what impairment looks like can have some pretty serious consequences. The DUI is more serious than most felonies, you've got longer set penalties, driver's license suspensions, all kinds of issues, so it's going to be a bit of a headache. Community colleges, they can't use it here with the ILC because they still get federal funding, so they can't use or possess marijuana on campus, that would be our buildings here, regardless, it's part of the school, so it's not acceptable. So ILC students coming here can't be bringing it on, I mean, again, nobody's going to be checking if they're under the influence or not, that's their business, but as far as carrying it physically with them, it's not acceptable on campus, either this building or any of the school district seven's property. There is a sales tax that's being imposed on this, so there will be revenue going to the state. There's been some talk, and I don't remember if Governor Brown has signed it or not, but there is an opt-out procedure for different counties to allow them to opt out of allowing marijuana growing and distribution within the county. I don't think that's going to affect state sales tax revenue in the effect that that all goes with the general fund, so this county decides to opt out or not, it's, the only thing that would affect us would be for property taxes, but as far as, as far as e-cigarettes and everything else like that, they're going to be banned, we are updating policy accordingly to make sure that those stay off campus, so we don't care if it's got tobacco oil in it, you know, sugar oil, anything else like that, though the e-cigarettes are not allowed on campus, so. And that's staff and students, so that's kind of basically where this comes down. And with, you know, and at some point too, technically, if we ended up with a different administration, this whole experiment could come crashing down, the feds could say, guess what, we're enforcing marijuana laws again, hey, state actors, if you don't back this off, you're all going to be a couple of prostitutes, and that'll end the whole thing, so. But I would remind everybody, that's, this is kind of how prohibition started, a bunch of states started refusing to enforce the ban on alcohol, and it got to the point where the feds couldn't enforce it anymore, so we could be headed that direction. Hard to tell, it's going to be up in the air for a while and it's going to be a headache, but it's not going to change as far as students and staff goes, at least for now, and especially not for students, there's no way anybody's going to allow anybody over twenty-one to be using this stuff, so, and that hasn't changed, so.
One of the things that was a hot topic in the marijuana class that I attended was edibles, that's a growing concern, they've seen it in Colorado and other places like that, particularly dosing and dosing amounts, that students are unaware of how much is an appropriate dosing amount, they bring something to school and share it, and you have students overdose and things like that, or thinking it's funny to share with a younger sibling, things like that, so that is a concern that's brought forward and that we may have to address at some point in the schools.
And there have been accidental, there have been a huge rash in Washington especially of kids, you know, going into the refrigerator and somebody didn't clearly label, hey, this was made with marijuana, eating a bunch of it, and again, what they do is they render marijuana down to a pure form, so the THC level is twenty to a hundred times or even higher than that, what you would normally get by smoking it, eating that, it hits your system fast and then it depresses the system so bad that you OD and it can be similar to heroin in causing it at that level. And that's some of the stuff where you hear about hallucinations and things like that, so it's something, if people are going to have that at home, and it's maybe something just as a safety piece, the district may want to think about doing, you need to keep it locked up, you need to keep it, because that can still be endangering the welfare of a minor, and it would also be, you know, something we would probably have to call Child Protective Services about because we're all mandatory reporters, so it's going to be complicated, but it's something that parents need to be thinking about, if they're going to have it in their homes, it's like their liquor cabinet needs to be locked up, you wouldn't allow your two-year-old to be playing with your vodka gin or your hypokodon, marijuana needs to be handled in the same manner, or if you're not being safe around your kids, CPS is going to have something to say about it.
So Rebecca, I have a question for you on your new format of the meeting. So I see that the minutes still say seven PM, but the actual meeting started at five thirty.
And that's only because I can't figure out how to change it. Which is like noted next to each thing.
Is there a reason that we hold our work sessions and executive sessions prior to the meeting?
So we can go further, we can go out, I believe, but.
It seems like those are the ones that have any more flexibility in cutting short or not, I mean, we're here to conduct the business because the regular, we should get that out of the way, so these folks can all be here at the right time, and then go into the executive session and the work session and gauge how much time in the meeting is left, by how much we cover around meetings rather than getting that stuff out of the way first.
You mean like changing, regular session is set to begin at seven PM always, you mean changing regular session to be a different time?
Well, we, yeah, we can change it to like five thirty.
I'm not saying we can't, but that's what.
Well, we probably could, you know, I started the district work session and work sessions were usually separate from the meetings, you know, at night time administrators, superintendent, and the board would do work sessions separate from the meeting, might, might, something to entertain, you know, truly.
Well, I was just looking at your, your presentation in the work session, we cut probably five minutes short.
Yeah, to get through. The other thing, executive sessions, you know, once again, I go back on this kind of district, executive sessions used to be traditionally after the regular session. We'd do the regular session and then the general executive sessions.
Yeah, the only concern would be you can't break any motions or do anything in work or exec session, so we needed to.
Yeah, we'd come back in the work session and then after, and so.
We used to have work sessions separate, but we have hard time finding enough nights where we can make it.
Yeah.
That's part of what happened there, but.
I just would think that having a work session after the meeting, then you have to stuck around for another five minutes to, so this doesn't have to carry on to the third meeting.
Right.
And we can go into.
It could have just been done.
Right.
We can go back to.
We would certainly back in the work session.
The willingness to do that seems to be a lot less than just sticking it on later hour.
Well, I think I wanted to make sure this started.
I'm near the stroke and I have a little mind, I've got to do.
Have the regular meetings always started at seven, though they were, it used to be earlier?
Traditionally, they've always been seven. Jeremiah didn't, needs to be, like I said, from eighteen years ago, they need all those charts. Well, actually, no, I'll back up on that, they used to start at seven thirty, seven thirty, you're ready, and sometime four to five years in, and that's. Try to pick it up, raise suggestions up next to me, and I'll, I'll try to master myself to, to get some.
Any other questions?
Nothing on mine, is there anybody else, Rebecca, Stephanie?
No, it is a very good presentation.
Does the state have a very good feel in this marijuana stuff? Obviously, it's out there already, prior to becoming legal. Are we, is there anticipation that the number of users is going to drastically increase?
No, honestly, the statistics are that the younger generation is actually not liking it. I mean, it's actually, and the other thing that I've heard, just that it's going to be kind of a big boom, just as it's a novel thing for a while, and then after about five or six years into it, it's going to crater. Because the other problem is, unlike moonshine, I mean, it's just that same problem they had with moonshine in some of the deep south and stuff like that, you can grow it all over the place, I mean, let's say that Oregon just did a strict ban and said, oh, you can only get from state-produced facilities and you want to tax it, well, you fill up a bathtub half full with a little bit of dirt, marijuana's free, you can grow it almost anywhere, and you can grow a Christmas tree-sized one of them, you know, anywhere, so there's just a lot of unknowns, but not really, I mean, they're not expecting a whole bunch of additional use, it hasn't, that boogeyman really hasn't existed. The problem to run into is unintended consequences, like kids accidentally getting into it, it's just something people have to be, realize they got to be all more careful with, and people don't remember edibles, I mean, like I said, you know, bottom, alcohol, it's pretty easy to have, but an edible, you know, where you, you make something out of marijuana butter or something like that and forget that you left it in next to whatever, and a little kid goes in there, into the, you know, scooping through the fridge to get a snack, that's where you've seen a lot of issues.
Well, we shouldn't have to anticipate any more issues, not a huge increase in issues in which, different than what we're already.
No. Your kids are using, right now in Lake County, kids are using marijuana probably more than they're using tobacco, but at least the statistical models on it, honestly, the younger generation is kind of, is just kind of getting a backlash because of how far some of the medical stuff got pushed. So it's always a pendulum swing, kind of goes back and forth, I, it's not going to totally go away, but it's something, they're having enough problems with the hard drugs, so they're kind of, it's, that's why they go a more lax, they got, they can't enforce what they already have, so it's another law of the books they can't force. Hopefully that answered it.
Today we're going to school, Martha, and I think.
We've got a number of meetings, girls, product managers, the forefront of it, so I'm going to defer to girl. We have the elevator design going. We had a meeting last week, we need some application book on, for, for issues, sound things, like incorporating, or something like that, so, uh, we'll be starting, we'll be, we'll be looking at some of the missing things, so. Been in touch with Jim Walls too, you know, the budget was a thing, you know, he's got to keep the eye on, and, you know, we've had a couple of conversations with him, you know, we will maintain the budget, but if we see Oregon like that, and he said we can't hustle and get out and get more grass, the funding. Maybe you came tomorrow in regard to this room, the deal with Poppyson, and KCC, Gerald, Dan and I, and some of that. And the information as far as the burden this room to interact with us from four o'clock. So that's tomorrow, you're reporting this.
Uh, no, we've gotten our memorial funds, uh, so that will be sending over the MASH to KCC, which is a hundred and ninety thousand that comes out of that dollar figure. We'll be sending that over, I believe that, in my conversations with KCC on this room, it's a priority to have it done before September, so, have you heard any of that need to help, basically? And then, um, then the other funds from OBD is also being, pardon, they're, the front half of that.
Would you ask the question, where are you guys?
I don't know.
Probably we'll hold meetings in the school building until the main floor, that room on the main floor down there is finished. So, I see in your future public library, in the main spots and, uh, so, that's what we want to have. Your big table, we haven't discussed what we need with your big table here, um, we don't know. Prox is pushed up against the wall, so, like they could run for laps and you'd see water on it. As long as it lasts, I'm sure. So that is the news on that.
Thank you. Check register.
Um, basically that's your invention, um, I think it's pretty well self-explanatory, except for that very first page. I had a, had a moment there and printed the wrong deal, so that's my fault. So on the second page, it gives a little bit more detail, supplies, maintenance fuel, plus fuel, what it specifically is for, so that should help you guys know and what we are, what we have under our bills. Right now it's pretty, um, that, that very first check register is a hundred and fifty-five thousand, but a lot of that is, um, of our goal over the prior year, or, excuse me, is, um, the new year coming in, such as PACE, that's insurance, we pay it upfront, we get a discount, so we pay it upfront, we get that discount.
So that's annual premium?
Yeah, that's an annual premium. Plumbing cards is the other big one, that's the turf for the soccer field. And, and some of these are book orders, um, we, a lot of renewals this time of year, so we have Anglia's renewal. Count of Lightview, that's the geothermal payment, so that's on there. I'm just looking for anything that sticks out right at the moment. I think everything else is pretty well self-explanatory, unless you've seen something and you have a question on it. Union Playground, okay, the second half of that, all the material is here. We believe that Mr. Roberts has everything cleaned out, ready to go for them to start in. I think currently they are reading the directions on how to put it all together, so.
That's incredible.
I know.
I don't usually have it.
And have we put it together five times?
What's up? South Coast ESD?
Um, yeah, we, let's see, is that on the second?
No, that's on that first page.
On that first page, I'll have to go back and look at that. We usually pay a monthly fee to them, um, that is our accounting software.
Oh.
We need to verify that. Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You are welcome, anytime.
Okay. Old business, facility update.
Well, we are chomping away at these facilities right now, the soccer field is currently going, we have a new playground thrown into it and also doing extensive walk-around on eighty K the other day to go ahead and put the paint job out for bids on that. Now it's a lead, we discovered, of course, it's a lead-based paint, which throws it, it's wonderful. There aren't any complications in the end of the thing, so it's gonna cost us some more to remove and get rid of that lead-based paint more of course, you continue, so. I want you to continue the bid process while we're, uh, ahead of it.
Well, I'm back up for just a minute, the bus bar did go out for bid, we have a man running tomorrow at two to meet with prospective bidders. From what I understand, it's three or four checked out, um, checked out materials to bid on it. So we'll see how that goes tomorrow and we'll be making the warning on that. But then that leads into the eighty K, uh, painting project. We're gonna have to put, put it out to bid because we were not sure who can deal with hard paint. And I know that John Roberts and Anthony so could do the lead paint. However, with the soccer field and other projects, little projects that, that are raising their heads and they're trying to mash and get it done before school gets started, little things, work orders, things like that, they're not gonna have to deal with that, so we're looking for the whole gamut on that. So that will go out, probably just by get Wednesday. And then I missed the deadline for, for this one, so it'll be next Thursday, but, yeah.
So, Eddie and John are both certified to do the lead paint?
What paint for that? The problem that we're having now is, um, we want the soccer field finished. That is priority number one for those guys. Right now, um, we are running into, um, well, as of this afternoon, we're, we've got some issues with length on it, where the goal is supposed to be the goal line, is that what we're...
Correct, yeah.
The goal line is supposed to be, we're gonna have to probably go...
Extend the field.
Extend the field out, um, which we have in the morning, with the staff with, with high school staff, Jim Nicole and...
Daryl.
Daryl, Jesse, you're, are you in? Okay. So that we can make, right now as it sits, we're gonna be, we'll be short two yards, two feet, two feet, two yards.
Two yards.
Two yards, it will be short two yards against regulation. So we're gonna have to extend out on this end.
On south end.
Right, we just get the house back.
Well, I, clearly, I'm not...
How could that happen?
Yeah, I'm not sure the field is the wrong size. This area, no, it's the area from the field to the, the boundary. So if they run over the field...
They have the percussion.
They have percussion fans. Yes, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Like even on the sidelines for team boxes, they have to have some feat of barrier for, before the team box.
The regulation field is about five feet within the grass, the grass hangs over the, about five feet.
And that hang up leaves...
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, the field is the right side. Cause I had, I had the same comment, we just...
I, I tried, I had to, it didn't work.
You said what I said this afternoon.
Is that OSAA, should we have to have a certain buffer?
There's, soccer fields are all shapes and sizes, there's a minimum, and we're part of them.
We're a very, yeah, bones minimum.
So, there's some things, there's, is it just the ends? We're, we're pretty pressed on the width too, that, um...
Well, I think we're, we're doable on the width. We're doable on the width.
If we wanna put the team boxes on the east side, is there enough boundary? We need to discuss, we need to discuss moving to the west side and putting the fans on the east side. That would, that would fit within the boundary specifications. So I guess we find that one, yeah. We do have, we do have some flexibility in the business, we can move the fans on the, on the side into the street.
Well, I think that we got, yeah, we've got a little bit of room too on the south end, quite a bit, so...
Is there drainage there?
Yeah, drainage is an issue, but we've got, and we've got a little bit of room on the outside of the drainage, I believe.
I think we need to give this deck boundary to the field more, so, for the player, the, the, so that the coaches can see how far.
No, that would be, could we go further to the west, so, and then just shift the flag near it?
We talked about that also, um, shifting it down, but the, the, um, on the other end of the field, our end, the district office side of the field, there's a sewer drain right there also, and we can't move that one.
No, let's just pull a fence around it, they can play around.
Yeah, there you go. So anyway, that's consuming a lot of time and then, um, Duck and Sam both got pulled off of the soccer field this last week. Cause you had a list in high school that ran into the hole, so that was a tear apart, do it, hurry up quickly, get it out there, so. Things like that, you know, I mean, things are starting to, work orders that need to be done, that was, that pulls them off, um, I think.
The fence, we gotta bid on materials and then try to contract out a couple individuals here in town and put the fence up. And save some money on that, we'll figure out that.
I think we're, I, well, I think we're probably gonna be somewhere between ten to fourteen-ish thousand on the fence. And trying to keep it over, so, um...
The good news is that you know, it's, you know, Pal's got, um, his current contact, me, and he, his office has been through five thousand dollars to provide through what Mr. Scott used to have, I believe through those drawings he was wearing. So, we can see that until December.
How much was it?
Yeah, five thousand dollars.
AYSO voted in for three thousand.
Three thousand.
So they will be... The scoreboard, um, we've got the ten thousand dollar donation on that. Right at the moment, we're filling with how to encompass the whole thing for ten thousand. So the steel, the wiring, the whole, the, the actual floor itself. Made a few phone calls, Heaton Steel, um, cause if they have it in stock, they can make a deal. So if they have to order it, then they, so, they're working with us and we're trying to get a weight load gauge, et cetera, like all that. It's been a big process, a learning process, um, so.
That's true.
Um, and like we said before...
Moving forward now.
It is moving forward, our goal is to get it done, we wanna get it done and be done with it.
So do we, would we have to have the painting done before school starts, or is that something that can...
We really wanna have that done.
We really probably do, yeah.
We really, sure, we also want that done, it's a big...
Yeah, so, we'll, frankly, we really need to, I mean, back to...
Thank you.
What's in the facilities?
Okay, new business.
Well, eleven point one, we have the OSPD policy updates this evening, they are on page fifty-seven, run through like a, it's... Well, they're a little long, so. I could sit here in OBD fashion and read to you this evening, or else I could invite you to take time this evening. Read with your leisure, we'll bring you back the next meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to either call me for a meeting or ask at the next meeting about specific things or anything. You will see in there, some of them are required and some of them are optional and, uh, so Mr. Headland referred to the impalement thing. And there are some things, you know, from my background related to elementary discipline, related to suspensions and this, so it's become a biggie as far as what I saw in the talk. So anyway, unless you have some questions, we'll bring them back to the next meeting for another read and possible approval into the consent, so. Questions?
We usually put it in work session before that, would you like that to happen this next time, so you guys can have a discussion?
Would you like another work session? Folks?
Sure.
Okay, can go in your work session.
Will do.
Okay.
Okay, school meal software program. Um, approval.
Yeah, so, we've got, um, our, our software for the school meal accounting program is obsolete as of this year. So we are going to have to, um, do something different. We had Evan look at, um, the software, it would be basically the, um, same iCloud situation. And you sign in, you get accessed, uh, anywhere, if you will. And it'll be easier to maintain for him, and how much management for him, they will provide us with some support. As you can see, the estimate is for ninety-four hundred, um, but we feel, be confident that the twenty hours of training is probably high, but that is an estimate for them. They can do it over the phones, uh, interactive, however we choose. When we, when Evan and I explored the program, it was very self-explanatory, so, in the church cafeteria and the ladies, um, the school secretaries can easily get through this, you know, um...
So are they part of the training also, or just in the...
What's that?
Are they part of the training also, or is it just you and Evan?
No, they will be on the training.
They will be too.
Yes, yes, they will be in on the training, um, specifically, not so much, um, Evan maybe will probably, so he could troubleshoot anything that was going on, but as far as myself, no, probably not, other than to give reports. So, that'd be ideal, so, um... There's other schools that are using it, they love it, so, and it makes our way to the OBD extremely happy, so.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just seeking approval, go ahead and move this forward so we can get it going.
Okay, so just a quick question, should we have had a motion first?
That was the presentation.
We're setting up the next time. We're not gonna have a motion first this evening, so, standard operating procedure this evening.
Well, even then, we still wouldn't have...
But you've had no discussion, so she just made a report and presentation, so now you can have a motion to have discussion.
Okay. I have a motion please. Okay, that's motion please.
I'll move that we approved the software, new software program.
I'll second it. We moved and seconded to approve the software program and purchase, so any other discussions? All in agreement?
I don't have any.
Motion carries, thank you. Certified teacher hiring recommendation approval, Mr. Paul.
Happy to recommend Chalas Young for middle school, high school, social studies. Obviously, computer applications, classes as well. This rounds out our hiring. We're working on class lists and class assignments for these teachers now. I'd like to give a full report on, uh, what the new hires, the amount of additional classes that we've been able to add at the middle school, high school. With thanks to the board, we're bringing back personal finance, three sections of personal finance. We've expanded our welding and small engines, uh, we're bringing back, uh, marketing, uh, business, work program. We have a math, another upper-level math class that we're offering, a full day of culinary arts, an additional Spanish, section of Spanish two. Health, yeah, so middle school health, our, our middle school electives have gone from the nine-week to, back to the semester. the nine week to, back to the semester. There'll be, there'll be true electives because of the additional staffing that's allowed us to, to help me run another avid elect class with that six figures coming in. I'll have it down, all down on paper and full report at the next meeting.
Awesome.
Following that report, I don't think, you know, it's a public announcement to kids and parents and community members, you know, and you have to start planning for, to decide for the school.
Absolutely, yeah.
Was supposed to show up and not have an idea of, wow, I didn't know.
Yeah, we're, we're actually changing our middle school registration to a full day just devoted to middle school where they will sign up for those electives.
Do you sign up for the whole year or?
Pretty much for the whole year, but you'll, you'll choose a semester at a time.
Oh, good. So that, is that, are you going to have to redo the high school? Like I know in the fall, they put down kind of what they wanted?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that as well. There's, there have been more changes to the, to the middle school electives than the high school. The welding is, we're offering welding full year now, other than it's just a semester. We're offering small engines slash kind of automotive as a full year.
For the high school?
For the high school.
So you move a motion to approve the hire?
Yes.
I'll move to hire Charles Young. As a social studies teacher.
So we moved and seconded to approve the hire of Charles Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Eleven point four, Fremont Hay is the account transfer.
Well, every year, we have to approve account transfers and my last act was principal here, so it's a fine problem here this evening, but anyway. Traditionally, Fremont Hay every year is transferring sixth grade field trip fund from A up to D M S to be listed as, in this case, the class of twenty twenty. I'm not acting, I'm honest with you, I haven't talked to him much. Money is left in that account, so I have no report on that, but traditionally, every year, it's running around, or five hundred, a thousand dollars for transfer down class. So we need more showrooms. I'll move that we approve the account transfer from the sixth grade field trip to, as it follows the class.
The class of twenty twenty, approve that. I'll second it.
Business, okay, so moved and seconded to transfer the A S B account for the class of twenty twenty.
Sixth grade field trip to class twenty twenty.
To the third.
Yeah, D M S class twenty twenty.
So all of, do you have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Move a second.
I'll second it.
Remove the seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Announcements?
Yes, teacher in-service breakfast this year will not be on Jewish on Monday, it's going to be on Tuesday because District Line and the S D has funded the entire county to go to the same service cases, so many buses taking staff, people and staff now to take cars up there too. Steve, her name.
Marcia Moeller.
Thank you, Marcia Moeller, who is the resident national expert in teacher evaluation and makes significant, great educational session out there. So that puts the end of breakfast to the next day, Tuesday, September first. After much discussion with a number of folks and years of experience flipping hotcakes, it seems like we usually always have, you know, we usually have them pretty much by seven o'clock, we have a half hour over, we're done early, so we're going to start breakfast maybe at six thirty to six. I suspect maybe Jeff's gonna show up, so. We can crank it out an hour and have those people there, so I feel as kind of wish I could. Yeah. So that is the asking on that. To the next meeting, I'll bring you the full teacher in-service briefing and observation. And that's it.
So charging the S B two ninety, the teacher evaluation?
Yes. They did send us.
Is that anything, one of us should watch it?
Sure, you're in line with me though, if you want to, definitely.
It's a pass, doesn't it?
Sorry, I'll say.
I know you were looking up your watch, so I was volunteering for a second.
Wanted to make sure, you said eight o'clock, but that's five minutes past, so you're still here.
So I guess that means I'm having a bit.
Well, I'm just wondering, is that going to help us understand some of the new options?
I'm trying to, I said, do you want me to?
And it's Monday, you're going to Paisley.
It is on Monday. Well, that's, we can get before fair, probably seven thirty, seven forty-five. So our time zone's, it's not all.
Okay.
Actually, unless you guys want to go to the Byron Park, it's in the fair stuff, I would.
Oh, oh, we, sure. Oh, gosh, yeah. Although I was always pretty good with the statistics, I'm just close to you there. I won't, anyway, fourteen point one. I'm trying.
Fourteen point one is laid on, from Croc, we're going to L H S D M S fees, I think we have, I suggest a fee statement on you, so I'm probably from Croc. I know during the budget committee, Dustin brought up fees and we have to make new cards and it's, need board approval to make any changes to our fees, so I thought it was a, a good meeting since Kathy and Emma come in next week and they're going to need to order new cards for, for statements. A good time for discussion on recommendations of what we'd like to do for fees. This was kind of based on what, waiting to see what our staffing would look like or what our offering was going to look like, but we went to a combined annual yearbook. So the change would be forty-five dollars for middle school as well. Culinary arts, we're going to offer a middle school home hack as an elective for a semester, so part of that requirement is a food handler's card, and that's what the ten dollars goes towards. Small engines is going to be a year-long class, so rather than a five semester, we are going to go ten, ten dollars. As, as you can see, the welding as well, ten dollars for the, the year. These typically go to safe glass, individual safe glasses, gloves, stuff, stuff that belongs and stays with the student that typically we don't budget for. We have the, the participation fee staying at, at one hundred dollars per sport, three hundred family max. That's, that's nine through twelve, and then we, we have since added volleyball and track to the, to the middle school. And that would also be, since we have paid coat, we're going to recommend the paid coaches, that would be a hundred dollars as well.
Just a question about the yearbook. So the D M S kids are with, I was prepared to do the yearbook.
Yeah, it's a seven, it's a seven through twelve yearbook. So is the A S B card in the tech, that's mandatory fee? Well, we still have some kids that don't purchase that. We, we made that change last year as well. It used to be, I think it was a mandatory that they had to buy a student body card for five dollars, and then that was optional to get the, get the, this athletic activities card, but that was for high school only. We didn't allow middle school to have that card, and so middle school and since had to pay to come to high school events. So we just kind of made it universal. It's an I D card that gets them into the game. We have one prize, it's twenty dollars. I believe ninety percent of the kids purchased those last year. If, if they go to those games, ball games, it saves them a ton of money.
Well, what about the tech, what's that covering?
I am, I am not sure what the tech.
Something like the internet or that new stuff.
Now, we have all the tech, yes. The tech, we have all the.
Computer and that sort of thing. And I'm there for a long time.
For a long time, yeah. I'm not sure what the tech is. I, I couldn't tell you. I don't know if it is a, if, if the kids that take computer apps or.
So, so that and the A S B card are mandatory. Doesn't pose for everybody.
Yeah, everybody has to pay for the tech, yeah.
For, taking for the computer use.
I think it's related to that, yeah, part, part of it, correct?
I'll probably get more about that.
Support the network or something like that, costing that one, have a view.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Well, the, well, the A S B card, I thought that was optional to purchase the ability, you know, you get, you pay like five dollars for your little I D card. That was your card, and then the extra was optional.
We changed that last year.
Okay, so that's what you were saying. Everybody got a card.
Everybody got a card.
To get it.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven through twelve.
Okay. So this year, everybody has to buy the A S B card?
Yeah, and that was, that was, last year was the same.
Oh, it was the same?
Yeah.
And last year with the yearbook, that?
Last year, that.
Seven, the eighth graders had their own.
Yeah, no, that just didn't make the change on the card when we, when we decided to do the combined yearbook, the cards have already been printed. Last year, last year, the, the yearbook was forty-five for everybody as well. It was a combined yearbook, and we intend to do the same thing and did on the card this year.
Little background, this, I brought this up in budget meeting. And I might be out of term again, I don't know.
Well, they told me that we're, we're doing old, old stuff.
Full version of it. I guess I have a problem with charging a fee that is mandatory. From the standpoint, the folks pay taxes, it comes through general fund of the school, that should cover everything that's required for a kid to go to school.
On top of a card.
But he still has to buy a card.
I see your point.
I guess that's my, I mean, the, the money that we bring into the district, you're part of the general fund of the budget, should be what every kid needs to get an education, whatever you're talking. If there's something else that's optional, I don't have any problem with charging a fee for that. But there's some people that maybe can't afford a fee, and maybe they can just choose something else. So I, I don't know, I struggle with that. The A S B card throws a little wrench in it, but I still, I, I just struggle with thought that we're going to charge people a fee for something that we're requiring them to have
In a public education.
Well, you take what most of these things on here are electives.
And I don't have.
Not required, and all those things on here require, you know, materials or resources to make those classes go.
Who's just still in their card?
Well, I have the tech, I mean, it's like saving my grandparents' taxes, I pay you enough.
But the A S B funds.
Another thirty dollars per kid.
The A S B card funds never comes to the general fund. They stay in their public account, so that goes towards the A S B. Any functions the A S B has, they put those on, it stays there, it does not hit the general fund. The A S B is not for the cards. And that covers?
Going to leadership camp, we, we took some money out of those funds to purchase the, the television that's now in the lobby, so it's stuff that.
Assemblies.
Assemblies.
I mean, it's something that is used schoolwide.
Schoolwide, yeah.
Every, but why not make it an option though? What if, what if someone has a hard time paying it?
I, like I said, I don't think, we, we printed out, the, the company comes in and everybody gets a picture taken, whether they buy a card or not, and we make a card for them. And like I said, there was less than ten percent unclaimed. We call it mandatory, but there were some kids that did not claim their cards, never paid for them.
It isn't a fee that's hit on registration day or upfront necessarily, I mean, you have to come and claim your card or pay for it.
You have to, you have to pay for it to get your card.
So how much are we talking, is twenty dollars a student, so? Six hundred, about twelve hundred dollars? Part of it's twelve thousand dollars.
Three hundred.
It's, yeah, it's, I mean, it's in our, it's in our revenue when we, when we do our budget, it's, it's, it's basically part of the, the revenue that's.
In your A S B.
We use it also, we, we talk to kids about some, most schools have gone to this, rather than the old Dale stamp or the sticker that they used to put on their card, just to, just to simplify it. It's called an identification card.
But I hear you are kind of giving them an option because it isn't a fee that's required right upfront.
Yeah, and a lot of times when families come in at registration, some pay, some don't. Some will, some will sign up to get a yearbook and, but not pay until spring, so, so on their, on their statements, on their fee card, when the cards come in, if they pay for it, they get it, if they don't, it stays in the safe and we'd like them to purchase it. Oh, yeah, we, we have, we have families that, yeah, I mean, a lot of families, we, we waive fees.
I, I like the sound of it that, you know, they can go and purchase, pick up that card, but it's not a fee that's.
No, no, we.
You know, that they need to write a check when they're at, or, you know.
Some families do, some don't.
So I guess I'd want to know a little bit more about the tech and what, you know, what is that? Or maybe it's for the internet, maybe it's for computers, maybe.
I'll find out.
It's for computers or?
Yeah, to be honest, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you, I don't know, but I think it is related to, you know, the network, computers, computer network, it's just a usage fee for students to use that. I think it was initiated back when we were starting to build the network in the district.
Does every student use the computer?
Yes, they do.
And is that?
About that.
So at this point, is.
Has this the cost of doing business for us? So probably, Sid, you mentioned budget, perhaps next year, somebody's saying bring a budgeting time, we'll, we'll, we'll do the budget.
Can I ask one more question on the yearbook? Do the kids like it all together? I'm just curious, I, I mean, that's a huge age bracket to put all together and kind of help keep, you know, schools.
Mixed result, mixed results, we had, most of, well, the junior high kids loved it. I mean, of course, it was a better book, better quality book.
Right.
The, the old book was, was basically just a, a paper.
Statement, yeah.
Yeah, and so a very quality book for, for them. I think some of the high school kids that were initially kind of concerned, I think once they saw the product, and once again, looking back to the archives of Lakeview. There, there were some years where Lakeview did include junior high and high school in their yearbook. It wasn't, we didn't set a precedence there by doing it that this year. We did have some junior high kids involved in the yearbook class as well.
So is that an elective they can say that for? That probably helps get some pictures of them and, you know, those age groups in there.
Right.
We have preschoolers to make sure.
Yeah, they were, they were kind of responsible for those sections. I think they did a pretty good job of making it an all encompassing book, separating it out of that. There was a junior high section which was added, so they felt like they had a yearbook. But once you got past the junior high section, it was a pretty, I mean, it was basically a high school yearbook from, you know, freshman year back. Yeah, there was some club sports that they interjected in there, but they kind of defined everybody in their own groups, it wasn't just like this. The law and so, I, I, I thought, I thought it was a nice book actually, and yeah, I can understand high school kids wanting independence, but this school is small. It's kind of like, then we're going to have a lower quality high school book and a really poor quality junior high book, I mean, like we had, I mean.
That was the reason.
Well, I mean, I thought we had everybody, but it's a nice heart bound big book and why we should play through it, really.
This is the last book I saw, it's, you know, very. That's what it was back then. I missed the dip. Oh, you had a heart bound middle school. So you have, you didn't have any better.
Well, last year was the first year that they came out and we, we had to listen hard for, I guess it was. And it's, you know, we're, we're a seven through twelve. And the reality of it is, after a week after school is out, we're getting, put to the bottom of the pile. Periodically they'll thumb through it another fifteen, twenty years.
The speed team is, speed team is middle school, high school combined, so it's.
Okay, you have questions or thoughts on the fees?
Anyone?
Okay, we will be in motion to accept those presented. And we will bring each other first or what tech files to the next meeting. I'll move that we approve the fees as presented by Mr. Proff.
I'll second it. So it's moved to second to approve the fees as presented by Mr. Proff, Alden in favor?
Aye.
Well, I thought about it, I was going to look at Paul, I was having a thought, I had, remind you, it's not fair to discuss it. Okay, agenda items for the next board meeting?
Well, going for a work session again and others to include finishing up goals and discussion on simple four forty-seven. That is the capital improvements bill from O S B, from Senate, from legislature, from Senate.
Anything else? You guys think of?
We have a second reading of the, of the, of the policy updates in the regular session.
Yeah, the policy updates, and the total policies are included in the work session also.
Our meeting times, we'll discuss those, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can discuss that. Hopefully we will end an OSBA person, the component, probably a meeting structuring protocol, and then we'll see. We'll be point lighting and have a. Put a middle school, high school student handbook in there as well. And also we will need representatives, we have Fremont Hay to see the ASB account transfers.
Yes.
Okay, your turn.
I'll move to a jury.
Oh, do I have, we have done motions and.
Actually, yes, we do.
All right. Do it down in the desk, yes? Who's second in?
Nobody.
The move to, we have, we have to approve the jury?
All favor say aye.
All in favor, say aye.